Calling the meeting to order. If everybody would stand and just say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Okay.
Our special, oh, here we go. Come on, get on in here. All right, our special guest this evening, state championship soccer team. Who wants to talk to us about the big game? Anybody?
Like, what about it?
I don't know, tell us how. I know you guys took it to penalty shots.
No, no, no.
No?
No.
Over time, just overtime?
Penalties was the week before.
Okay. It must have been.
I mean, I still remember like every detail that day because it was like, what, a week, two weeks ago, one week ago? I don't really, no, I'm at. It was like, I kind of knew going into the game, we were just kind of waiting around all day, except we did have like a little practice in the middle, so it kind of broke it up. So that was good, but other than that, I kind of kept myself, I don't know about the rest of the team, busy by doing homework and just like normal weekend type stuff. And then it was just like a normal game. We got to the school at like four o'clock, rode in nice coach bus, thanks Booster Club. It was really nice. And I just like, I knew like the atmosphere was different and stuff like that, but it just felt like a normal game. Like, I've played, we've played in like state games before, bigger games like in the conference championships, so we've been used to this stuff. So, I mean, we kind of like handled it well, the pressure, all that stuff, the atmosphere. We've dealt with it before.
Well, okay, personally for me, I didn't feel like a normal game. A lot of people there and obviously like, like she said, we've been through this before, but it's like, this is our senior year and I was like, this is like, it's serious now because the last time it was sophomore year and I was kind of like, oh, it's like, it's big, but it's not that big. But this year it was like, it like really meant something and it was great.
We wanted it.
Yeah, we wanted it a lot. And it was really great to go out with the win.
How many of you are seniors?
Ten of us.
Wow, that's awesome. As the parent of a former girls soccer team goalie, who's your goalie? And to your parents, God bless them because that's a hard one to watch. So congratulations to you all.
So I just wanted to, Mr. Penny gave me some fun facts here.
I would love fun facts.
Very interesting. I had a chance to go to the game. It was a, it was a great time. I moved down to the end zone at the end. And just want to say as somebody that played a little bit of sports my whole life and has been around it, this, this team brings great energy and a great sense of community. And I think that is a really, really important thing about sports. So I congratulate you all for that. Senior said you played in this game a couple of years ago and lost in the, in the state final and came back and really bonded together. We also have some young kids on this team who are incredible talents and are going to be very, very exciting to watch over the next couple of years. But our first state championship since 2000, outright state championship. And the first time ever, the girls team have won both the league championship and the state title.
Awesome.
Most overall wins since 1987. All right, so a lot of success with this group. Only conceded 10 goals in 23 games.
Wow.
So that's pretty wild. And this, this, this is an interesting fact. I give Mr. Penny credit for this one. I like this. Only trailed for 42 minutes the entire season out of approximately 32 hours. That's a Coach Jarvis. That's a good one. And Coach Jarvis is in the back. He's fifth year with us. Congratulations, Coach. With the assistant coach, Becky Umar. Sally, who's your first year with us, I think? All right, so very, very exciting. And is, who, who hit the header in for the game winning goal?
Maxine.
Maxine? All right, so I saw you on Twitter talk about that play. So talk about that play a little bit for me again. Relive it one last time.
Okay, so Figgy took the free kick and one of the defenders headed it backwards towards the goal. And the defender that was covering me, I don't know where she went, she went like towards the post and then, so I was like left wide open and I headed it to the other side.
Great. That was really an awesome moment. And the other piece was there, I don't know how many people were in attendance, but a huge, huge community turnout of community members and students. So really, the athletic program bringing out the best in the entire community. So I just want to, from the superintendent's lens, congratulate you for the wonderful things you did and how you represent our school. Really, really exciting, really exciting stuff. Maggie, you want to say anything?
I just wanted to echo all of that.
Put you on the spot.
I just wanted to echo all of that. When I see you guys in the classroom, on the stage, doing all the things that you do, it's just so impressive. And then to watch you bring it home for us. Back to Simsbury, we are so, so proud and really, really impressed, not only with what you do on the field, but how you represent yourself as a team and individuals in our community. So awesome, awesome job and very impressive. And just want to congratulate all of you, your families, for all the hard work. I know it's not just this season, it's all the way up from all the years of playing. So, and a big thank you to our coaches. All your time, energy and effort, it's truly appreciated.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Can we get a quick photo?
All right. Mr. Curtis and I are getting him up.
Get a good angle, Principal Saito. It's all about the angle.
Remember me.
Come on, Max.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have the third medal?
I got it, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Coach.
Congratulations.
Good stuff.
Now, any other recognitions?
Nope.
Okay. Public audience.
Oh, yes.
Public audience, anybody?
Okay, well, we're going to go from fun facts to facts, facts. Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oakhurst Road and I really would have preferred a different transition, but what are we doing? I feel like I'm totally being punked. I keep raising issues about the content of the books in our schools, the required ones and the optional recreational choices. I've talked about it for months, maybe even years. There are a ton of books in our schools that are full of language that if printed on a T-shirt would get a student a dress code violation and require a change of clothes. I've talked about content that is so extremely sexually explicit that it's harmful to minors. I've done everything but read it out loud, mostly because it's so uncomfortable to me and I am not a prude. But come on, you don't live in a bubble. There are videos all over the internet about parents reading these books to school boards. I would be stunned if you were okay with any of your children reading these books. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you're okay with your kids reading erotica and pornography, but I'm not. I'm not okay with it being available to my child without my consent and I'm equally not okay with my tax dollars being used to buy it. This isn't about banning and it's not an LGBT issue. There are just as many offensive books with heterosexual storylines as with any LGBT stories. These books should not be purchased with taxpayer money and they shouldn't be available to minors. Students have to sign a permission slip to watch Schindler's List, but are assigned books endorsing pornography and can go read the most disturbing books on par with Fifty Shades of Grey in the high school library. Of only 72 of the most sexually erotic books I checked, including detailed descriptions of oral and anal sex, rape, including by a parent, and yes, really, pedophilia, we had 38 of them in our schools, more than 50% of the ones I checked, including one teaching masturbation, intercourse, oral and anal sex and birth control with pictures in our elementary school for pre-K through sixth grade. Yet this board doesn't blink. Have any of you gone looking to see what's in the schools? It is the board's job to approve curriculum materials. You all set the policy about what is allowed in the schools and right now, your policy abdicates the decision to the American Library Association. You direct the schools what to buy, not the administrators. The board does. Are you really okay with the choices? Are you sure? We're about to see a presentation about social emotional learning. I can't honestly believe that anyone would entrust the institutions that provide pornography to minors with their children's social and emotional well-being. Maybe if we didn't provide them with harmful material in the first place, we wouldn't have to teach this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to me? Come on up, state your name and your address, please.
Thanks. I am Alec Lawson, 28 Fairview Street. I wasn't aware of that. That really concerns me too. I would hope that the board looks into that and puts a stop to that. That's very disturbing. I have young kids in school. I also understand that you're going to hear a presentation on social emotional learning tonight and I would just ask the board to ask some questions. And you know, that is, what is the content of that? I've seen some social emotional learning curriculum that is very positive and you know, one of my reactions was, wow, my kids need that, right? They need to play a little nicer. But I, I think there is also some social emotional learning curricula that is very politicized and even radicalized. And if that's the model that we're looking at tonight, I would ask you as the board to please ask questions. Who chose this model? Were parents consulted? How many parents were consulted and asked for this specific model? Will parents be notified if this model is implemented? And also if so, will there be an opt-out? An opt-out procedure that parents will be aware of and able to engage with to just immediately opt out? So please, please ask questions about this curricula. Please ask if it's politicized, if it's radicalized. I know a lot of us parents don't want any part of that and would like to bring our kids up with our values and not some political organization's values. So please, look into the nature of it and keep parents posted in terms of the content of this social emotional learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on to communications. And Mr. Curtis asked to go first tonight.
Yes, all right. So a bit of a special evening. It is the last board meeting for two long time standing members, Susan Salina, our board chair, and Todd Burek. So I just had a couple of things I wanted to say. So I'm going to start with Susan a little bit. I have a little gift for you. All right. It has to do with you always looking for that gavel. So we have your very own. I apologize to your husband for that. I'm sorry, Tom.
No, my husband's in front of you.
Engraved gavel. All right.
Oh, that's awesome.
But in all seriousness, you go back and you think it is 16 years of service on the Board of Education. You replaced Rich Hogan in 2007.
Oh, my.
To think about that. Vice Chair in 2018 and then elected Chair in 2019. So I've had a couple of opportunities, one at convocation, but now just to thank you for your years of service, your commitment to our district. I feel you've always kept the students, the parents and our staff at the very center of your decision-making and led through some tough times of COVID, certainly where we had to learn as we, as we went. And you were really steadfast in that time and have been a huge supporter, certainly to our administrative team and consistent over the years. So thank you, thank you so much for all you have done. And Mr. Burek, 12 years on the Board of Education before now you move over to the Board of Finance. I don't know when I need to get my first meeting with you to talk about the upcoming budget. But elected secretary in 2015 and vice chair in 2019. And Todd, just appreciate your, your questions, how you think, your analytical mind and all you've done to keep us steady throughout the years and your involvement really, particularly for me in the, in the budget process and then personnel negotiations and all the work you've, you've done there. So you know, not a lot of thank yous in these positions, but wanted to step back and appreciate both of you for the time, the amount of meetings you start to add up, the number of meetings over, over that tenure. And it's, it's really been a pleasure to, to work with you both. So thank you. I have a little gift as well. You can open it at another time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From our city freelancer and just little, little logo and plate that has the Simsbury logo on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I think some of our other board members might have a couple of things to say.
I would like to say something. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve someone like Sue who's always made the success of every student a priority. She believes in supporting the teachers and staff in order for the students to have that success. I've known Susan for 25 years. We met in the line at Simsbury Preschool as we waited to pick up our three-year-old children, our daughters. We find ourselves here today, still friends and still sharing a passion for our schools. And throughout all those years, Susan has been an integral part of our school system, whether it be the PTOs, running theater, theater club at Squadron Line, running Neon Night at Henry James, late night prom and grad parties at SHS, or sitting on the number of Board of Ed subcommittees, diving into budgets year after year, or congratulating student award recipients. So many contributions. All of us, all of this volunteer work has culminated, culminated in her 16 years of service to the Board of Education. We'll miss her dedication and commitment, but we are so thankful for the years she spent advocating for the students and the district at large. And we hope that you will accept this gift from us, who are friends, your fellow board members. We'll miss you, but we know that you'll still support our community as always. Thank you so, so much.
Break it to the male.
You can.
Because I'm a child.
It's not a gavel.
It's not a gavel. I appreciate it.
Tom, lock wider.
Well, the gavel is pretty cool.
I'm kind of loving it.
Pretty cool.
I'm very excited about that.
There are enough kids.
It's going to come in handy at Christmas when they all come home. Oh, that's beautiful. It's the oak tree.
Pincho Sycamore.
Oh, beautiful. Sorry, I always do that. The Pincho Sycamore. And I never have one, I always wanted one. Thank you. Thank you, thank you all, very much. I, your kind words mean so much to me and I am so lucky to have served with each and every one of you. As long as I'm chatting, I have little goodies to hand out. To your buddy, Apollin. Because, you know. There's a little note inside for each of you.
I don't want to.
Oh, shoot, hold on.
Mine says Tara.
I know. No, you don't.
If only.
Oh, she couldn't tell.
No, I just wrote the wrong initial.
Never come up. Now you got a strike.
Mr. Watson.
How cool.
Mr. Chairman.
He's very cute.
Hey, there you go.
And then, my other friends. I can't get over there, so you're going to probably pass those over. And who didn't get their pencil?
Neil? Katie? Brian didn't get a pencil.
And Brian gets a pencil. There we go. So from me to all of you, it has been such an honor and such a privilege to sit here. And I, as the kid who was the one Tara and I often talk about, that kid in the middle who doesn't always get recognized, who didn't go to college right after high school because she didn't do well enough to stay and came to it as an adult, I have never had a stronger appreciation for education in my life. And being here and trying to watch out for those kids in the middle has been what's brought me to every meeting, to every function, to appreciate every teacher who reached out to that kid who maybe wasn't doing so well and convinced them that they were in the right place at the right time. And I would have loved to have been a teacher in a different world, but if this was my path, I am grateful to each and every one of you here for it. And to my good friend, Mr. Curtis, who I have known for far too long. Your early guidance when I first took this role, and I don't even know if you remember it, it was a conversation in your office at Squadron Line, was immense. It had an impact on me that I carried with me every time I walked into a meeting after that. And to my dear friend, Patty Lou Peters, who also helped me along the way. And Mrs. Lemke and Neil and Katie and all of you. We have an incredible group of people running the school system and I am so proud to be associated with you all. And you're not getting rid of me that easily, so I will be back. But I promise I'll keep my comments to less than three minutes.
That's enough for me.
All right.
I'm supposed to talk about Todd, but I just want to say, Sue, thank you for everything you have been. I didn't know, for mostly, I didn't know Sue before I came on the board and I now consider her a really good friend and I just want to say thank you for all of the collaboration. You brought me in. One of the good things about this board, as I think people know and some people don't like, quite frankly, is that we leave party affiliation at the door and you never did that with me. You never, there was never a political bent or perspective that you ever brought with me and I appreciate that. And I can only hope that I can lead by that similar example. Under three minutes. And now Todd, my friend, who I've known for quite some time and quite simply is the reason I'm on this board. Most of you know, when I came on the board, I was very disillusioned with politics. And Todd said, take a look at the board. Because we leave, again, we leave all that at the door. And I couldn't have been prouder. And for all of you who know Todd, and you all don't see this on a day-to-day, but the way he looks at problems is unlike anybody I've ever seen. It's very analytical, the emotions left out of it, and it is exactly what we need and it is exactly what we are going to miss. Again, I'll say, Todd, you are the reason I am here. I greatly appreciate your friendship, more than anything we do on the day-to-day. And as Matt said, you're still on speed dial. Still hope we have very good collaborations, maybe down at Millwright's or something over at Board of Ed. And I just, I just wish you the best and thank you from the bottom of my heart for serving on this board.
Thank you.
And with that.
We're going to wait to open this.
That's all right. But thank you, everybody. 12 years and every four years, I'm like, that's it, I'm done. All right, I'll stay. Because it's the team. I'm a big proponent of teams and how people work together and that's what keeps people here for 16, more than 16, for 12. It's a collegial place to work with a common goal. It's not just the board, it's the administration. It's, it's everybody who we come in contact with. I've said before, I love it when the public comes out. 100% of the time, I don't agree with everything, but that's okay. We need to hear that. That's what this is all about, about the kids, about being, you know, the largest employer in town. It's an important job that we all do. When I first was asked to, hey, you want to join the board? I'm thinking, why would I want to do that? Something happened in the school community at that time. It was 2011. And I saw where the school, the high school in particular, was a focal point for kids outside of school to get together and to deal with some issues. And I said, I want to be part of this. I want to be a part of this school district and having it be a place outside of the education where people can come together. And it's lived up to that expectation and it's because of everybody in this room, everybody in the room. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
All right, you got a meeting.
Now you're meeting. All right, here we go. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 14. Oh, no, we have other communications to do. That's right. Sorry, Matthew, I'm sorry.
Sue, report. So not that much is, at least, but Tariffill, the modular classroom that I talked about earlier are being implemented and they're supposed to be done by mid-December and I just want them to be occupied. Squadron Line, the strip truck raised over $700 and they're donating boxes of food to the Sweetie Food Chamber. And SHS, as obviously you just saw, the girls soccer team won the state championship. And the Freedom Pens is implemented annually where students stay overnight or forever how long? I think it's 21 hours on Veterans Day to celebrate veterans and make these Freedom Pens that are actually shipped out to veterans.
That's great, thank you. I tried to get to the Pen of Fame this year, I was too late, but well done to everybody. So Mr. Watson.
No, no committee reports, but I just want to congratulate the girls soccer team as well. My daughter played travel with a lot of those seniors, K through eight, and many of them are going on to play college soccer as well. So it really is a great group of girls. So congratulations again, and that's all I have.
Hi, I, last meeting did not report on the curriculum meeting of October 26th, but I will do so now. We had a meeting of the curriculum committee. We were discussing the capstone because it is no longer a state mandate to graduate with a capstone course. And we discussed the value of keeping the capstone and we, we presented, Sue Lemke presented our new graduation requirements. And after lengthy discussion, we talked about the graduation requirements, the three pathways to capstone and life skills included in the process. And we decided to keep it as a very beneficial aspect of our curriculum. And we look forward to moving forward and growing with that program as it goes on in the future and becomes more understood. I mean, it's still so new. So it will start becoming even more, even better as it goes, as it grows. There also, we revised social studies standards that are being implemented across the state. The new standards will be inquiry-based and we will compare current and newly adjusted methods and we will compare current and newly adjusted methods to make sure there are no gaps in any of the learning along the way. There's a three, a K-three reading requirements from the state, and we are waiting on our waiver. I believe we'll have another committee meeting this week, and we'll hear more about that this week. So, that was pretty much our meeting, so I wanted to report on that.
Appreciate that.
I also want to do it, um, do you have questions?
I was just gonna say that I like that we're keeping the capstone. I think we learned a lot in the two years trying to get that off the ground. And I think we've made a lot of good space and community connections through it.
Great.
I think it's good for the students, too. I mean, I think it really gives them a chance to feel, find success and self-esteem and looking through the lens of something they really love.
Yeah.
I agree. As a parent of a daughter who was hesitant to take, you know, for the capstone requirement, she ended up taking the entrepreneurship class, and it really helped her, with her presentation skills, with her confidence, all that stuff. So, I mean, for us, self personally, for my family, it's been great.
Matthew, have you done yours yet?
I'm currently working on mine, doing the music program. And yeah, I found that it's something that is not too intrusive on a student's curriculum or classes. Like, it's rare that I have peers who are unable to fit into their schedule, which is something that I feel like this body was concerned about as it was being implemented. But yeah, I agree that I think it's giving students a very valuable opportunity to develop these skills that a normal class wouldn't actually provide them with.
That's great. Good. Thank you.
I also wanted to make a mention of just a community piece. I wanted to thank, there's a group called the Volantines, which was started by Macy Getz, and she is for a bunch of the students who need to get their community service hours, and so she's got a website, and having just worked on creating the Simsbury Celebrates event last weekend, we used them, and they were wonderful. They came, they helped, they helped clean up after the fire truck parade, and I just want to do a shout-out, because all those kids were amazing, and every day, so I'm proud of all the kids in our school district, but that Volantines group is a really cool, cool thing that we have going on now.
So, community groups can reach out to them for help?
The Volantines.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Oh, I love that. That's great. Mr. Purek.
One other thing that I meant to say is that I know that, I've heard a lot about the two folks that are joining the board, and I've heard such wonderful things. Best of luck to you guys, and congratulations. I know they're gonna slide right in, and things are gonna keep moving.
Agreed, agreed. You're all set.
All set, thank you.
Yeah, so, um, last week I attended the CAE B caps convention, and Matt and Sue were also there. And the, the, um, we also said goodbye to a lot of, we had about six hundred attendees, but we also said goodbye to a lot of our colleagues that have retired from board service and moved on to other things and what have you. So, it's always very emotional when they've been on with us throughout the state, so that was a nice piece. And the theme of this year's conference was leading from why, why we do what we do, why we are in public education, why we serve as Board of Ed members and public boards. So, we had about forty, between the two days, we had about forty sessions and workshops, and we had a great keynote speaker who spoke about AI, was very, very interesting. I know you also got to hear him, and, and so it was really, really very worthwhile. We also had our delegate assembly, and that is our working document that we, we proposed, and we passed probably about sixty-four resolutions, and this was about a half-day of this. And so, resolutions are submitted to the Government Relations Committee of CAE, and these will be our documents that we're going to be using when we start the legislative session come February. This year will be an early year, from February till May, so there's going to be a lot of work to get done in a short amount of time, but we were able to, without a lot of consternation, able to pass the, the important resolutions, and they go from governance to finance to public school choice, to you name it, from everything, from A to Z, anything to do with public education. So, that was the first step of where we are. And we were able to give this year our legislator award to Senator Jeff Curry, and he is the co-chair of the Education Committee, and he's been very instrumental with, with the Education Committee, with us, with Boards of Eds, and superintendents, in helping, as a former Board of Ed chair from East Hartford, where he got his start, so he's very well-in tuned to do what is going on within the state in, in Boards of Eds and, and in public education. So, it was really very nice to, to honor him in, in this way. But I think the most important thing that I also have, and I'll save it for last, but I gave you the highlights of the CAE Journal. We have a new president this year, as you know, I was president about ten years ago. So, we have new officers, and Len Lockhart is from Windsor. He will be the new CAE president with the others to follow suit in, in this. And unfortunately, this year, we did not qualify for a leadership award, so hopefully next year, we'll be able to work a little harder on that, to be able to get, get what's the criteria needed to, to also get that award. But the other important thing is, I was looking through some of the information, is, on this, you can't see this picture, but this is a banner taken, oh, I don't know, maybe about eight or nine years ago? And in this banner, this is when we were marching on the hill. And these are our students, our Simsbury High School students. Now, I don't know, I don't remember their names, but Katie's got a better memory than I do on some of them, and probably remembers the years, but this banner is the banner that we use, have been using for the past several years, and it was a very big banner, looking at it. And when I looked at it as the banner, I said, I think I know those kids, I think I know those students. And they were our Board of Ed student representatives at that time. So, I'm really proud of these kids that are still on the banner. We still use, we still publicize this, that, you know, for, for public schools in Connecticut, and public schools are our future. So, this is just something that's a real proud and special moment. So, that is it. It was a great conference, and now we are going to be moving ahead to, you know, the Connecticut Legislature, so we've got a lot of work to do between now and, and February, and then I'll be...
Gotta be light legislation this year.
We hope it's light legislation. We hope. There are some things that are going to be brought back. There was a lot last year, and the word on the street is some of the things are going to be brought back again that were not passed last year. So, our, our position is, we want to keep it light. We want no new, new pieces of legislation to come through, because there were many pieces last year that were not completely identified. And I know they're going to be bringing them back again, but we just hope that there's nothing that's going to impede the work that we've been doing within public education for the past year or two. So, more to, more to come on that.
Thanks, Lou.
Nothing at this time? Mr. Sol.
Just a quick mention that, that our assistant principal at high school, Vanessa Messiah, has been out after the birth of her daughter. She's returning next week. So, we're looking forward to that, but this is a shout-out to a retired administrator that we brought in during that time. Sue Henneberry had done time in West Hartford as a department supervisor, spent a stint up in Granby as the middle school principal. We weren't really familiar with Sue until Maggie and I brought her in for an interview. And for someone to come in for three months and kind of put a hundred and ten percent into it, I really admire her, and I'm gonna keep her on my speed dial in case there's a need in the future. So, really just tremendous work by Sue, and I wanted to give it public recognition. So, she'll be with us through Friday.
Nothing at this time? All right, then. You already went. Or do you have anything else?
No, all set.
No, I'm good, too. Okay, so now I need an approval of the minutes of the November fourteenth meeting, please. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the November fourteenth. In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Personnel.
Yeah, just one item that requires board action tonight is the resignation of a new teacher to the Simsbury Public Schools. So, this is one that is unfortunate, but Javier Rivera is someone that we hired in the spring as a special education teacher at Tooten Hills School. And unfortunately, in talking with Javi, we've had a few, I know the board has, a few of our newer educators who kind of get a little bit into the profession and decide maybe that they're gonna take another path, and that's kind of where Javi is. At this point, we did have an exit interview that was pretty productive with Javi, but at this time, he has resigned his position, and we are in a search for a replacement at Tooten Hills School. So, the motion is there for your action.
Move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Javier Rivera effective November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
In a second, please?
All set.
Neil, do we have somebody to fill the gap in the meanwhile?
Uh, right now, we're distributing the caseload a little bit. We're looking to see if a retiree can come in. But our hope is that we can fill this pretty quickly, and by the new year, have somebody in place, so. But there will be a little bit of a gap.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Information reports.
So, the rest of, I'm sorry, we got more on the...
I'm sorry.
That doesn't require your action, but I do just want to highlight it that, because it's good news that we are filling some gaps. And most, I want to start with the first one on your exhibit, which I'm really excited about, and many, some of you participated in the process, that after Angela Griffin left the district to become an equity director in another, in another district, we had an opening for our Director of Music and Performing Arts. We had an unbelievable process, great candidates in that process. But at the end of the day, our own great candidate, Lisa Abel, was recognized as the right person to fill that role. She has been with us in the district for like eighteen years. It's, it's really, and has built a tremendous culture in that program. And as you know, has been our Teacher of the Year for the district, and done tremendous leadership work. So, that one felt really good when we got to the end of that process and Lisa became the candidate. She is doing some dual work right now. She's still our band director. We have posted for that position and have interviews starting, but she's got her hands in two places right now.
Foot needs pool.
Yeah. So, congratulations to Lisa on her well-deserved appointment to the director's position. And the others are some that we had talked about at previous meetings. Danielle Cottone is filling the vacancy that we spoke about the last time for a Simsbury High School special education teacher who moved out of state. And Danielle comes to us most recently from Granby Public Schools, where she's been the last few years, and will actually start with us the week before Christmas break. Jen Seibert is filling a vacancy that we had from a retirement late in the summer for a school psychologist at Simsbury High School. Neighboring districts are not gonna be happy with me, because this one comes from Farmington Public Schools most recently, so. And Jen is actually, this, she told me it's a return to the Simsbury Public Schools for her, because when she did her internship many, many years ago, it was under the direction of our school psychologists at Squadron Line School. So, Jen is, but most recently at the Farming Public Schools. She'll start on, she'll start on January second of next year. And Kelly O'Connell, another late retirement in the end of summer, when our teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing retired. And Kelly comes to us most recently from Crex Soundbridge, where she's been in this role as a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing for many years, has consulted in our district before, and we believe will fit in absolutely seamlessly and look for... Actually, she just started yesterday, so she started after Thanksgiving. So, those are filling some gaps that had been left over. So, we're almost there.
Thank you very much. All right, now, information reports.
I'm gonna ask Sue to introduce this report this evening on SEL.
Terrific. So, if Dr. Bachelor, Ms. Forsberg, and Ms. Farah will come, I always want to call you catsmen, it's going to be difficult, but want to invite these three incredible leaders up to share a little bit more about our social-emotional learning and what that looks like here in Simsbury. So, we've had some discussions at our curriculum committee, and at the request, we had been asked to come and give an overview of what we do K-12. And what is the social-emotional learning? We've actually been talking about it for quite some time. It's embedded in our strategic plan, that was pre-COVID, that we were talking about developing in seventeen and eighteen, and actually took hold in two thousand and nineteen. But when we talk about social-emotional learning, we're talking about these five major skills that you see here in the presentation of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So, you'll hear an overview first, K-six, and how it's living there, as well as very specific ways in which we address social-emotional learning at both the middle school and the high school. So, I'm gonna start with Dr. Tyresha Bachelor. Thank you.
Great. Over to me. So, part of the, this, to give you just some context of the rationale for having SEL curriculum in, in the first place, one of the things is we want our students to feel like they belong in school and that they're welcomed and greeted. And, and so, as part of this overall piece of having the vision of the graduate and the competencies which directly align with each other, that was the basis of a lot of this. So, when they walk in the door, they feel a connection to school and feel a connection to each other, and actually, how to create those connections, right? That's part of the teach that goes into this. As Ms. Lemke, oop, sorry. As Ms. Lemke shared, just having that, the competencies aligned directly with the vision of the graduate, the overlay just is a seamless foundational skills for those, those pieces that we want our students to have before they, they leave. And finally, having an SEL curriculum piece allows us to have shared experiences, whether that's K-12, K-six, to, to have those, those through lines to know the kids are gonna have a shared experience once they graduate. So, a little bit about the history of how we got there. We have character ed in all of our buildings. They have different names. There are Owls, there are Shines, there are Trojans. So, all of those, all of those pieces were already as a foundational piece. And this, again, just like the vision of the graduate, the character ed and the SEL just align themselves to all of those foundational skills that we want. As, as Ms. Lemke shared, in our strategic plan, that all that work was there, to talk about how we're gonna build this, how we're going to align these. And then the pandemic hit and kind of highlighted the need to us to put the gas pedal on a little bit for us to get there. And so, it outlined that. We were able to put some things in place. We were able to create some school-based teams to create some SEL in, in the interim, and at the same time, some self-care practices for our practitioners who needed it as well during that time.
Perfect. So, then, kind of just a snapshot of what it looks like from the elementary lens. So, during the course of an elementary school day, each teacher is provided with twenty instructional minutes for their SEL block. It's during this time that the explicit direct teaching occurs. That explicit direct, direct teach, it looks the same between grade-level classrooms, so the children got this shared experience, and it looks the same classroom to classroom between grade levels. The elementary SEL curriculum, Everyday Speech, is Castle-aligned. The units of study are based on the five areas of competence, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. SEL instruction at the elementary level also exists in the character education programs, as Nancy mentioned. So, at Terriffill, a lot of, you hear showing climb, the students mention it, the teachers mention it. It's kind of our mantra of our school, and it's just how you exist within our school building. So, when the kindergartners come, they're taught to show climb, they're given their little kip owls. The sixth graders who are doing their, their school jobs and being the leaders of our school, they're still relaying back to showing climb. So, the five character ideals of climb, respect, response, or the four, respect responsibility, citizenship and caring, they're really the foundation of our school culture and how we treat each other and how we operate. And we have our climb assemblies every month to recognize the Castle competencies that we choose to recognize, and we celebrate the students who are demonstrating those competencies.
Can you explain what Castle is for people in the room? Because I don't know that everyone here knows.
Sure, absolutely. So, Castle is the resource, or am I jumping ahead?
No, no, no. No, actually, she's going, she's going back.
Oh, perfect. Here's the slide.
So, yeah, it stands for Collaborative for Academic Social-Emotional Learning. That's the acronym, and it's the basis for all, where those five competencies come from. A lot of the, the information that we gather on each of the explicit teaching units comes from them, and they are research-based.
So, last, last year, when I joined the team, if you will look in the notes, I wanted to make sure that we had a clear vision for what we were practicing K-12. So, in order to develop a framework, and we are in the infant stages of developing a framework that is K-12, we wanted to find a source that was reputable, that was research-based, and that had alignment with standards and what, what other districts are using. So, we chose Castle to help develop that framework. So, now I want to talk a bit about middle school, but before I do that, I, I just want to say that Mrs. Farah, she, she gave an excellent presentation of what SEL is, but she didn't really talk about what she does and the magic that happens in her classroom. When you go into, I've gone into her classroom to observe students that are participating in a pilot, and Everyday Speech is not the curriculum that we're using. We don't currently use a curriculum. We're using a framework where you will see that we're teaching into the five competencies through our character ed program. But what you'll see, which is the magic in her classroom, is that she's embedding the practices and the language and the soft skills that we know that students need. Do you remember that saying, every good thing that I need to learn, I learned in kindergarten? I was a former kindergarten teacher. I know that's the truth. But then we also need that framework for carrying those things from kindergarten all the way to high school. So, now I'm gonna talk a bit about what it looks like in middle school, because again, the framework is for K-12. You still need these skills, like you all need these skills. Now, we, we know, research tells us that most people leave jobs be, not because of not being able to do the work, but the comfort in not being able to work with the people. So, we want to make sure that when our students leave Simsbury Public Schools, they have all of the skills that they need to, to do hard things. So, I want to talk about middle school. So I want to talk about middle school a bit. In middle school, we have the unique opportunity, thanks to the board's support, to be able to provide explicit lessons during our wellness class. So as you recall, in middle school, students have, all students have wellness, they have PE, and then they also have connections. So in wellness class, this is where we really hone in on what are those skills that students need to navigate the academic and the social components of being a middle school student. You cannot have one without the other. If you have middle school students or you have them, you know that it is true. As they're learning, they need to develop those skills. So some examples of what might happen in a wellness class, I'm, I'm going to go to a recent activity that I saw, was students writing a gratitude letter. So what that looks like is students identifying what am I thankful for? What is supportive, what do I need? And so they wrote these letters, but it was twofold. It wasn't just about students identifying people that are in their building and in the lives to support them. It also gave teachers a chance to see what are, who are the students that we need to connect with? Who are students that might need more support? Another example of what might happen in a wellness class is a mindful practice. And mindfulness is not closing, just closing your eyes all the time and practicing breathing. That is one aspect of it. If you are focusing on reducing the anxiety that you have or retaking tasks or something that may happen in the day, that will not allow you access to the rigor that we know, which is Sims Berry Public Schools curriculum, we know that there's rigor. But mindfulness is also identifying the spaces and how you learn. So students do self-activities, self-awareness activities where a student practices saying, you know, I don't, I think I learn best when I'm working alone. So students can say, I might not want to join and, and be in a collaborative group. I might need to practice this alone. So mindful practices are again, making sure that students know who they are and their learning styles. Now, in addition to the explicit lessons that we teach in wellness class, there's also those organic opportunities where students practice these skills. So explicit teach and then there's practice. So one of the practices in middle school is the first four. I love the first four because it really speaks to what students need in middle school. So the first four minutes of every class are students preparing for what they need for that specific period. So teachers have, have a routine that they do, the first four minutes of every class. And it looks different based on what they need. If you are in a band class, the first four minutes might include time to unpack your instrument, clean your instrument. If you are in a class that's on the other side of the building, if, if you know the, the means that's in the middle school, it might include time for you to go to the restroom before you have to be in your seat. So all of the things that students need to be prepared academically and socially so that they can access the curriculum are the things that are considered during the first four. Now, an example of what happens in the first four, it's not just teacher-directed. A lot of it is also student-directed. So they, they also have games like would, would you rather? Have any of you played Would You Rather? Okay, so Would You Rather is an example of what you might do during the first four. But it's not just about students having fun. It's also a chance for students to learn about each other. It's also a chance for teachers to learn how students learn, what their learning style is. So in one class, the teacher asks, would you rather, and I want you all to answer this. So would you rather read a report in front of the class or write an essay? How many of you would choose the essay? How many of you would like to stand in front? Right, so as a teacher, so as a teacher, so as a teacher, you, you're able to, to, to see and, and to see how your students will respond to that. And then that helps you to support them. So where do these?
I'm sorry, can I ask you when you, your, the gratitude letter, the mindfulness practices, the gratitude letter, is that something that is shared? Is that just between the student and the teacher? Is that just for the student themselves?
It was, it was not shared, it was for the students. The students did share it with the teacher and then the teacher from there made, had some comments and some conversation with the student. Right, and so they were able to identify that there were some students that were failing. And I'm not sure if it's because of the time of year. Where, they're also intentional about the activities at different times of year. So before students are going on Thanksgiving break, it was a great opportunity to see students that we might need to check in. And so I gave them a window opportunity for teachers to do that. So some are whole class, some are individual. But within the wellness class, and it's also a safe space because it's the class of people that you are working with. And they've developed these skills over time. So we don't start with gratitude, we start with self-awareness in September. Thanks. So here's an example of connections and how there is a standard that then becomes a, a unit or a lesson. So I, I just want to say that there are some units that naturally lend itself to the standards. It's not a forced standard, but some naturally match. And then in high school, we have a similar format. Oh, I, I guess I should go back. I want to just give you this example because I, I love this example. So people ask me, self-awareness, what, what does that look like? You're doing that in every class, I think you're forcing it. I say, no, I think not. Let me give you an example for PE. So for PE, one of the things that students are doing is students are learning how to play different sports and they're learning sportsmanship. So part of self-awareness in PE is being optimistic, knowing your strengths and your limitations. Okay, with sports and the superintendent knows, I know my strengths and I know my limitations. And I can be as optimistic as I want to about playing basketball. But the reality is, I may need to, to choose something that is more strength-based, based on my strength. And so how do you have those conversations? And how are you self-aware of the fact that, you know, I may not be Michael Jordan? So at the high school, there is a similar format. Again, there is a direct teach and that is done during connect. And then of course, there's opportunities for students to practice the skill. I wanted to show you two units that I think are important. As students enter ninth grade, there is a mental health unit. And one of the activities that they do for mental health in ninth grade is filling your bucket. Filling your bucket is a concept that start, that actually started in kindergarten. There is a book called Bucket Fillers. When I was a principal, the first week of school, I went to every single classroom with my assistant principal. We read the book, we put buckets up, and students will fill each other buckets up with positive things and positive images. It's a continuum. It's not as if you, you learned this skill and you no longer need to practice it. So yes, we do need to talk about these skills and practice these skills in high school because sometimes that's when the work gets hard and things get hard for students. So they need to go back and remember some of the skills. So there is an activity, Filling Your Bucket, that's not elementary or kindergarten, but it's the same concept. Another thing that happens in ninth grade, which is a guaranteed experience, is the Project Adventure. And it's all about team building, climbing, getting students to work together as a team and to support each other. And they come at the perfect time, the beginning of the year, when, when students don't know each other and students need to build community because they're coming from all of these schools. We have the Owls, we have, what was it, we have the Sunshine. So they're all coming together to become Trojans. So it's a perfect opportunity to support that. And, and the connect classes, you can see throughout the months that they're working on the SEO competencies, which are in the middle, and then just some examples. Right now, we're in November and one of the self-awareness activity is journaling. So students learn the skill of journaling. It's, and it's not that every student is required to journal all the time, but they give them different activities of what you can do in connect period.
Back to me. Just a side note, I did Project Adventure just a few years ago when I was in high school. And still is one of my highlights of, of high school was getting to do Project Adventure and the team-based things. I really bonded with other students. So that's, that's a nice thing to see that we're still able to do that. But yeah.
Is Project Adventure best done during PE class or during my team class, high school?
Yes.
Did you do it too?
No, has it been at the high school, how long has it been at the high school?
For quite some time. For quite some time, so they have different. Yeah, they have different units that are embedded and a lot of challenge by choice activities through that. But certainly we can share more. It's really important.
So as Dr. Bachelor talked about, we, we have been doing a pilot at the elementary school with Everyday Speech. So our, part of our next steps is that we were able to actually gather together the team on that, that professional development day to get their feedback. We're going to want, that's feedback we're going to want to bring back to the curriculum committee to say what, you know, what did the teachers think about being as part of that, that pilot? And in the interim, we do have, we've created this, this framework where we have what the, the competencies that we're teaching on, there's five of them in 10 months. So we do one for every two months. We give the teachers an outline of, here are the things that we would love for you to think about teaching. Here, here are the, the books that could go with that. And, and we have lots of resources for the teachers to use in the interim. That's, that's while we're doing this pilot and looking at, at some shared experiences.
So if I can just add a piece into this.
Please.
Family communication is extremely important. Specifically at the elementary. And we want our families to know exactly what we're teaching and how we're teaching it. So if a classroom isn't involved in the current pilot, parents were sent notification home. The outlines were shared with parents. And if there were any questions, they were to reach back out to the teachers. That's just for the pilot. For students that aren't participating in the pilot or classrooms that aren't participating, to Nancy's point, five competencies, every time we're teaching into a competency, information goes home about what the competency is. So if it's relationship building or relationship skills, this is the competency we're teaching into. We encourage parents and families to ask their kids about what those lessons looked like. So there's always proactive communication before that happens, so parents are aware.
So what's the scope of the pilot?
The scope of the pilot, yep. So we have all five elementaries participating in some way, shape, or form. And there is each grade level across the five elementaries as represented. So we have about 10 teachers.
Eleven.
Eleven teachers that are participating in the pilot right now. It was very important, so we're, you know, why are we engaging in the pilot? What we are finding with our scope and sequence prior to this is that we would have lessons outlined that would be appropriate, let's say for K-1 or 2, 3. And what was happening is students were matriculating through the elementary school. They'd be like, oh, we already did this, we did this in second grade, right? So as Nancy was speaking about before, it was really important to make sure that it was also developmentally appropriate and was building upon what kids already knew. So that was very important. But that's the current pilot. Right now, we are giving updates to our curriculum committee as that pilot unfolds. We want to make sure that this kind of outline is what we are seeking for our students and for our teachers. So we'll be providing additional updates to curriculum committee about that pilot. So you'll, you've heard that the 712 doesn't necessarily have an SEL curriculum that we're following. The skills are more embedded, certainly in wellness is a very natural opportunity for those skills to be explicitly taught and in many different ways. So it's not like we're following a very specific curriculum, but you'll find self-awareness in certain lessons, most explicitly in connect, but also in our wellness courses. And I do want to remind everyone that outlines of our curriculum are on our new fancy curriculum map, which is on our website. So those units are in very explicit, parent-friendly, family-friendly language. And you can look at that not only through SEL, but through the lens of any other content.
Sue, I don't know if I'm following this correctly, that's all the schools? But I know that at my particular elementary school, that the principal's message often comes home with what the SEL, like that weekly message. So parents can find out that way too, what that SEL is going to be.
So the SEL District Committee created standardized listserv options for principals to send out so that there would be, again, a unifying message coming from all five elementary schools.
Great.
Are the teachers, so I'm trying to get this straight in my head. Are there teachers in different schools but same grade, grade level teaching the curriculum? Or is it different grade levels in different schools?
Different grade levels in different schools. So it was based on a, a volunteer basis. We're given the fact that we're juggling a number of initiatives with the new Math in Focus and all of those pieces. We wanted to make sure that we weren't burdening teachers with that. So we did do it on a, on a volunteer basis. The curriculum team got the first dibs if they wanted to do it, which of course, they jumped on. And then additional people that, so we could get a wide range of different grades at the different levels just to see where things were at. Dr. Bachelor has stayed one unit and one lesson ahead of where we're going so that she's previewing any of that to see if there would be anything that would be particularly sensitive so that we can stay ahead of that. And if a teacher said, hey, there was something that happened at recess and I'd like to use this lesson, can I use that? She would preview it before that as well. So we're trying to make sure that, we're thinking through the lens and to, to, Ms. Lempke's just making sure that we're communicating with families.
Are the teachers able to come back together and kind of talk about?
That's what we did on that November date, is we all got together and got to go through and review. And, and we got, we got some, some great feedback that we're excited to share with the curriculum committee.
And, and again, that, that is a small part of what we're doing for K-12. That's just the initial stages that came out of a need for teachers to have additional resources and to be able to come together and share the resources and the lessons that they were doing. What I, I do like about Everyday Speech is, is that there are a lot of things that it's easy to, to share across grade levels. So if you have some students that are in third grade, but they, they need a, a lesson that comes from a second grade lens, you can save lessons and you can go back and, and we can actually see trends across the district of what we need to focus on. But without the curriculum, we are still doing the work of making sure that when we say SEL, we mean these are the five castle competencies. This is how they align to our Character Ed programs. This is where we're going to do explicit teach. And this is how we use the same language to make sure that students are having those experiences.
I'm sorry, how, how do we know it's working? It's, we're, the students are getting out of these five compet, they're achieving the competencies. How are, how are we?
Great question.
How do we know?
Sure, I mean, from a, I can speak a little bit from the pilot because it's a little more concrete, right? Because there, it's a curricular-based. So for example, one of our teachers that are doing the pilot, they did their, their professional growth plan. And they did a pre-assessment on the competencies, what they know. And they're doing, they, there's a, there's a informal test, for lack of a better, at the end of each. And then they're doing a comprehensive one at the end of, are they retaining these skills? But ultimately, that's knowledge-based. What we hope to see is their ability to generalize those out when they're on the soccer field, when they're in the classroom, when they're on the job. So some of those will be a little bit more abstract and a little bit more observational-based and maybe some behavioral-based at some point when we're having less referrals to the office for those, those social emotional learnings, they're learning how to play nicer, you know, as, as human beings. But I think there's some short-term and long-term ways to look at, at, at how it's working.
And I, well, I want to make sure that you have a chance to.
Yeah.
So, so there's, there's two things. I, I want you to hear from a teacher who gives a narrative data point in terms of, do you feel that this is working? Do you know that this is working? How are your students responding to this? I want you to share that and, and then I'll answer from, from another lens.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's amazing to hear some of the kids using the language organically. Like I, we were trying to explain this morning what a pessimist is and one of the boys raised his hand and he said, if you were a pessimist, you wouldn't be using a growth mindset. So he was able to connect that lesson too. I feel like, you know, listening in on conflicts and conversations, you do hear some of what we've taught come up. So I, I would say you see bits and pieces, which is nice throughout the day.
Ted, I think you also, just, Matt and I were at Terriffel School today and there was a bulletin board and it was all pictures of students that said, I, I'm not able to do this yet and here's my progress. Right, so I think that there's, and I'm sure Dr. Bachelor is going to speak to more of the quantitative ways that we can measure that it's working. It's a lot of the qualitative in growth's mindset, it's how kids are interacting on the playground, it's how they're dealing with conflict. Like are they getting mad? Are they utilizing some of their, their skills in their interactions? Are they figuring it out on their own? Do they need adults to step in? Or are they managing kind of how to be in a community on their own?
Pretty observational by your teams and, and just seeing how.
I think that's a big part of it.
The environment of the culture.
That is actually a beginning part of it. But we can also look at referrals. How many students after a teacher has, has intervened, was not able to have students mediate and actually had to send them to the office? Or how many students had to work with the school council? Or how many students had to work with the school counselor or the guidance counselor? Because using those tools were not helpful. We also have other ways to track whether or not students tell us that it's working, especially when students get in fourth and fifth grade. The students are responding to their SEL. They, they have their journals when they're telling us that they're using the skills. Students can tell you, I use the skill or I was able to, I was able to, what is it? To blow. They, they tell me to blow the.
The circle.
The circle. Right? So the, we have data that shows that students are using it. And that data is kept by the principals, is kept by the school counselors. And also the report cards. Report cards, we did a, you did a great job. I give the credit to the team who did a great, great job of aligning parts of the report card comments to the competencies.
Ted, I think the other way that we can look quantitatively is that when we're looking at our survey data, we always highlight safety and belonging. Do students feel safe in their physical space? Do they feel like they belong? Do they feel like they're connected to adults, to each other? So those are all measures that, you know, principals will report on in their survey data. I think that's certainly another way, hey, is it working or not?
Ted, I took, Ted asked the question I was going to ask earlier, but let me see if I can ask it slightly differently. Obviously coming out of the pandemic, we saw the, the purely academic challenges that we needed to, to tackle. But obviously these soft skills, you know, again, just getting these kids back together and interacting with each other and the need for these soft skills are, and I'm thinking this from a quantitative. Have we seen less referrals since then? Are you seeing the sense of behavior improving? Just again, maybe I'm asking Todd's question slightly differently, but I'm trying to think of a concrete example when maybe these skills were needed at their most. Sorry. It's a very long-winded question.
So you know, I will say I will come back with that information because if I'm, you know, if I'm going to give you some data, it's going to be accurate. So I, I can come back with some different types of data points. But the, one of the data points that we do use in middle and high school are talking to the students and using the focus groups. So part of the next steps, one is for middle school. Thank you for mentioning elementary, but is to develop the vertical, vertical team, seven 12. So that we could see what measurement they're going to be using in the middle school to make sure that's similar to what we're using in the high school. Teachers leading professional development. And we saw that during our last PD session. Stuck in the middle for middle school, that, that's where I learned all of the things I told you about the first four, then I had to go and see it for, for myself. Because teachers are teaching other teachers about their best practices around SEL and some of them are not calling it SEL, but we're recognizing that there is a component of those soft skills. And then the last thing is for me to hold my student focus groups. I like spending time with the students and students have already said that they want to lead some activities. Students have told me that they want to lead some of the connect periods, that they have great ideas, how to make it more engaging. I asked the students. So through our student focus groups, I'm actually going to ask the students also, how do I know whether or not this is working? What are some things I should be looking for? You know, we have smart students, so I'm going to put them to work.
Very good.
That's great.
And that, that's it for, for SEL.
Any other questions for, for Tyresha? Everybody good?
That's great. I was really excited about that four because when we had our meeting last, we were talking about study skills.
Yes.
And that was, and that first four is, you know, just training them to, to know how to get themselves together when they run in the room. So I love that.
Yeah. And I did a horrible introduction. Caroline Harat, first grade teacher at Terrifield School. Nancy Forsberg, assistant principal at Squadron Line. And Dr. Tyresha Bachelor, Director of Equity and Access. I was not a very good hostess when I was introducing you all. But they've all been involved in some of these district conversations and it's something that they're passionate about. And thank you, Taya, for leading this work, but also highlighting like the magic that happens. It really is Caroline, every single day when you're working with these little beings about how to be their best selves and, and how to make sense of what's going on around them. So thank you for your great work.
I think it's great. I mean, it makes kids feel more comfortable about some of the things that they're a little tentative about learning. That, that gets them interested.
Gets them more comfortable with themselves.
So I have a question. So I really liked that first four. I think that first four just really, it, it just hits it on the head. You know, the first four minutes and I know it's middle. Would you ever consider even bringing it down because that transition from six to seven? Would that be something at some point, that first four? I mean, I'm thinking of the students that it's never too early to, to learn the first four. I need a first, I need a first four.
I was going to say.
Sixth graders who have to change rooms.
Right. So is, it's something, it's, it's, it's helpful starting young. It's a building block going forward. I mean, and I think that's something that we might want to take a look at also. You know, how do you best prepare these little guys, you know, coming from?
Give them some responsibility.
Absolutely. And they know what that, when they enter into a middle school setting, it could be daunting coming into, you know, middle school from sixth grade after K through six and there. So they've already had that first four. I mean, that's in my mindset right now, the first four, the first four minutes. I'm going to have to practice that first four minutes because I need that. But I think that's something that would be beneficial, you know, as, as we move, move along, move further.
Well, as Mr. Baker was talking about at the, at the, his middle school presentation, right? This important transition with fifth, sixth, seventh. It's something that the teachers are very engaged with and want to do better with. And it's all about preparing. And then what does that look like from eighth to ninth? So more to come on that.
And will we, do we have vertical teams that go, I know we do seven 12, but do we ever have a five to eight or five?
They're usually based upon content, Jen. So we have vertical teams right now, very active for math, for social studies. It, they're very content-based at this point. But we certainly have ways in which we transition and have conversations across these transitions of elementary, middle and high school. But I think we can think more creatively about that, especially when it comes to executive functioning skills.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll get her home. She's got first graders.
All right. So now we are onto nutrition services update.
All right. Never want to follow a great presentation, but we're going to be just as good, I assure you. The, and I think we can all agree that a important part of social emotional health is eating. So we thought, we, we thought it would be a good pairing to give you an update on, on a portion of our operations that is a very important part of the day for our, our schools and our, our families. And has been through some times in the last few years in terms of nutrition services. It's been a long time since the board got a full report about nutrition services and thought it was timely given where we are coming out of COVID and the fact that we've made a pretty significant transition to a new director. Bonnie Anderson, who has been the, before she took this position on July 1st as the new director of nutrition services, was our longtime cafeteria manager at Latimer Lane School with roots for her and her family in the community for many, many years. And had, was, you were at Latimer for nineteen years before. And has stepped up with excellence into the director's role. And it's part of what we wanted to be able to highlight to, for you tonight. So we're going to kind of give you a broad overview of some, some of the kind of big buckets that are involved in terms of what goes into the school, the national school lunch program, some of our participation numbers, some of our financial numbers. And talk a little bit about a pretty important review process that we're, we're in the middle of and about to experience more intensely in the spring. So thought it would be a fun way to start by just doing sort of one of those by the numbers exercises. So if you think, help you think about the scope of the operation. How would you like to be a, a restaurant that serves 900 breakfasts every day? 1,700 plus lunches every day? In addition to that, across our schools, $2,000 of additional à la carte items. This operation involves 37 full-time and part-time employees across our seven schools, supported by Bonnie and one other halftime central office. Sandy Hayes is another support staff up here at central office who works halftime with Bonnie and halftime in payroll. So all of that is with pretty lean administrative support. One of the numbers that we put together is the, that I was unaware of until Bonnie added it up, is just the number of hours that, of training that in addition for Bonnie as a new director, that our, our staff have to go through in terms of food safety and sanitation and everything that that takes. So that 264 hours is just in this school year that we have logged in terms of training hours. And as the spirit of the season, we think that leads to seven thankful school communities. Given the, given the school breakfast and lunch program. So the first portion of the, of the slides, Bonnie's going to walk you through a little bit about our national school lunch program and then I'm going to pick up the backend. So I'm going to let you go there, Bonnie.
Here we go. So Neil came to me two weeks ago and he said, hey, there's a board ad meeting and we're going to, and I said, okay. So we're going to give it a whirl. So we participate in USDA, United, United States Department of Agriculture's National School Lunch Program. They are our backbone. They are the rules and the standards that we get. Connecticut has higher nutrition, nutritional standards than the USDA. So whenever we get changes, 100% whole grain, we were ahead of the curve. Connecticut has had those standards before the USDA even put them into motion. The National School Lunch Program sets the ground rules for breakfast and lunch. As you can see on the slide, breakfast has to include milk, fruit or vegetable. Vegetable is new this year. It used to only be a fruit, but we can include vegetables now for breakfast. Grains and the calories are based on age and there's no trans fat ever in anything that we serve. The lunch is similar in that it's milk, fruit, vegetables. Vegetables have to be varied throughout the week with dark greens, reds, oranges, beans, starches and, and all the different colors of the rainbow. Grains, meat, meat alternative, protein alternatives. And again, the calories are based on age.
So in addition to what you see on the slide here, what Bonnie provided you in your folders is very detailed information about what goes into figuring out the nutritional value of what is served. And it's why we have a director who controls the menu in that we have to make sure we're meeting those standards. And so that's why you see one school lunch for all the elementaries is listed because we need to make sure that all those requirements are met on a daily and a weekly basis.
And the CSDA is very, very helpful in that they have a tool that you plug all the information in and it kind of brings it to the end and tells you that you've coordinated all the things you need to coordinate with that. So reimbursable meals. The National School Lunch Program works on subsidizing breakfast and lunches. It's been an interesting transition because we went from full pay to free, to free, oh, back to full pay. Oh, no, nope, free again. And now we're back to full pay. The governor was very helpful in that this year, he announced to the whole world that lunch and breakfast were going to be free and he really didn't mean that when he said it out loud at his conference, which has caused a whole lot of problems for a lot of districts. In Connecticut this year, we have free breakfast. We have lunch. Anyone who qualifies for free or reduced gets free. Sandy and I refer to it as free or produced because it is free this year. And then our full pay families. Interesting fact on this slide, a household of four to live comfortably in the state of Connecticut would need to make $93,000. That was a fact that came from the governor's office when they were, I was at a conference in, in October. So as you can see, the free and reduced thresholds are almost ridiculous. Those are a federal level. They are a federal level across the United States of America. So 39,000. No. And that makes things much more difficult because in Connecticut, the cost of living is much different than say Mississippi or, you know, Nevada. So that makes things much more, much more interesting. Our free and reduced costs, I, I brought our, I put this in your, your folder. We get reimbursement rate of $4.28 or 25 cents for a meal, for lunch from the state of Connecticut for our free and reduced children. So.
All right. And you could see that the prices that we're charging for lunch, we had not raised the prices in many, many years. This year, still three, $3.50 for an elementary lunch and $4 for a high school, a middle school or high school lunch. So that's where we are. We gave you three dates here that I want Bonnie to talk about. 2019 was picked as like a pre-COVID October and then showing you the recovery from there. So.
Correct. So 2019 is what we were looking at at breakfast participation rates across the district. We did a participation at 88 breakfast. Then when we, we transitioned in 2022, we were obviously free for that entire school year. So this is October's, we call them participation rates or ADPs. 2022 went up to 751. This year, we're up to 899 on a daily average. So breakfast is important to the governor. He felt that all students should start their day out with breakfast. This is why we are doing free breakfast. All the studies have proven hungry children do not learn. What we do is very important for that reason. So if they start their day off with food in their bellies, they are not as distracted and they can learn better. So.
Percentage. It's a pretty low percentage though, still.
4,000 kids in the school district. Right. So 900 of those are accessing free breakfast.
And that's.
I know kids who will do it once in a while or.
Well, it's a little more, I will say as a manager at Latimer Lane, the 125 that we were seeing, it was the same kids over and over again. I mean, they're my, my kiddos. They would come in. I'd be like, hey, Joe, hey, Bill, hey, Suzie. You know, hey, Mrs. Anderson. You know, so you see the same ones every single day pretty much. So you know that they're, you know, the consistency is there for your certain kids. And then there's other kids who say, wait a minute, it's a cinnamon roll today. I'm in. You know, so.
But I, I certainly want you to see on this slide that pre-COVID, the breakfast operation was a very small piece of what nutrition services did.
And that was kids that, that you had to qualify for.
That was mostly free and reduced.
You did not, you never needed to qualify for it. Anyone could get breakfast or at any time. It wasn't just for free and reduced kids. I think there was a misconception there at that point. I mean, that, those were the ones who were mostly participating, but I think a lot of parents weren't aware that it was available to every student in the district.
And you think the numbers are just up because of, like, why would COVID affect breakfast? Just because we've made it free?
Yes.
Self-marketing.
Communication around it, right?
Right.
That became an opportunity.
Can I ask like a really, probably not really dumb question?
There are no dumb questions.
So my kids eat breakfast at home. When do they, if they go to, when do they have breakfast? They just show up late to class or they eat it in class?
They, they get it. They can, you know, most of the buses arrive to school pretty early. So you're getting your breakfast at 7:10, 7:15, 7:20, usually eating it in the cafeteria. But some kids get it on the way.
Some eat it in the classroom, some eat it on the way, some kids are, you know, in the cafeteria depending on, you know.
That might be the part of the 900 number too, the timing aspect to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have to ask that. And some teachers will let you eat in class. So like people come in, they'll go to the cafeteria to get breakfast or they'll come in early to get breakfast. So yeah, I mean, there's not, I, missing classes, I don't think that's.
Especially at the, that number for the high school is the one I'm surprised at, so low.
How late do you serve breakfast?
I'm not really sure what time Katerina can.
I don't mean just, I meant like, is it, is it sort of like it shuts down before school starts?
No, no, it's happening as they come into school and as they are beginning their day. So I know like.
But I meant like by first bell, is that done?
She usually, when I was the principal, she kept it open through like the first period of the day. And then needed to close it down in order to go get lunch ready. So.
If you've got a ninth grader with first period free, he's probably having a cinnamon roll.
Yeah.
Or a breakfast.
Egg sandwich. That's good stuff.
So then we have. So then we have our lunch numbers, which as you can see, went from 1,291 across the district when we went to free 2230 and now we are hovering around 1714. Those numbers dropped a little bit in November only because elementary schools had a lot of half days for conferences and it really does impact our lunches. You know, it, there's not really anything you can do about that. But I was actually surprised with going back to full pay that we didn't drop more significantly.
I heard good things about the chicken sandwich.
Yeah, so that's a big one around here. Chicken sandwich and French toast sticks.
Kids could love that.
Love those French toast sticks.
For time in like seven years.
So it's, I mean, what I, when Bonnie pulled these numbers together as we were preparing this, I mean, to me it shows that how much the operation, even how many we were producing last year when it was free, but the fact that it is pretty significantly larger production than it was even a few years ago, like to be serving that many more lunches. So, you know, and, and most of these staffs are three people at an elementary school, you know, a little bit more at Squadron Henry James and the high school. But for most, this is pretty, that's a lot of lunches for a few people to get out.
Are we adding to staff at Latimer with the new cafeteria?
We're talking about that, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, so I completed 80 hours of training so far to learn the federal and state rules. I'm working towards my level four certification for childhood nutrition, which will entail about 150 hours. I'm in the middle of seven classes right now as we speak. We just completed modules on training food safety sanitation. We did serve safe in early November. So that's been completed. I just got everybody's certificates in the mail yesterday. I have to send them back to the schools. I'm really proud of all of the people who work in our department. It was funny when we were in here taking the class, the woman who, she didn't have, so it was a manager's training, the FDA rules now say you have to have manager's training. And she was asked, she said before said, oh, not everybody always brings all of their people together to take these classes. Well, you have to have someone with certification in the kitchen at all times. She started asking questions and my people answering, answering, answering. She was like, okay. And I was like, we know what we're doing. We know what we're doing. We do have a lot of people who've been here for a really long time. They work really hard and they really love the kids. The assistant manager over at the high school, Tom Meredith, just had surgery. He was out for a long time and I, when I talked to him, I said, he said, I just, I miss the kids. Like, I just want to get back. I miss the kids. And that just made my heart happy because I've never had a more fulfilling job than this job in all of my life. So. Thanks for sharing that. So current challenges and opportunities. So the rising cost of food. As everyone knows, the rising cost of food is a nightmare. I think the free lunch program when it was going on was really beneficial. A lot of states are going with it and continuing on as a state funded situation. I know that the School Nutrition Association of Connecticut is working hard to go back to free lunches and having the state fund it. I will say from a minimum, from a, a family who was in the middle, this was a really beneficial time for families with the rise in cost of food. I think that people forget that the people who are on the lower end of the spectrum, they always get the things they need and that's fabulous. But the people in the middle are the ones who kind of don't always get all the help they need. And this really was a way to really help them. So the rising cost of food is affecting everyone. It's affecting our department and the availability. We are, you know, Neil laughs. We work with Wade's Dairy, carton, milk cartons. There's a shortage of milk cartons. It's the most ridiculous thing you ever want to hear. Doug Wade was.
They have the milk, they just don't have the cartons to put it in.
They don't have the cartons to put it in. And Doug Wade was telling us the other day that the cartons have been sent to the prisons because they can only have cartons. So they're trying to figure out a way to get them to the schools that maybe aren't in cartons because they can't have plastic containers. So it's an interesting situation. So these are, and they have challenges also, staff shortages. We have companies that are not producing all of the things that they can produce anymore because they've had to, to shrink down their types of, you know, their varieties in order to accommodate for staff shortages. Wages, rapid increase in minimum wage. Minimum wage has been increasing, I mean, a dollar a year. You can't even make this stuff up. It's like a lot for a budget like ours to handle. Staffing challenges, again, you know, finding people who want to come in and do the jobs. We have the uncertainty of the funding, which has been an interesting challenge. Again, free, not very free, not very, sort of free. We don't know. You know, they don't tell us until the last minute. Poor Neil. He was like, I need to know. I'm like, oh. You know, last year with everything with John Frazzinelli. So I mean, it, it's made it very complicated for everyone. A la carte sales, a tribute to making our program more sustainable because we only get so much for each lunch and $4.25 only gets you so far with the rising cost of food. So other things, Cool Schools Cafe. We used to do this a long time ago. We never used to, we let it go. They sent me an email. We get, it's a rebate program. So when we buy certain foods, Thurston Foods who we
Chicken patties.
Chicken patties, Tyson Chicken patties. They send it up to Cool Schools and they give us rebate checks. They also give us free goods. So I bought a lot of kitchen equipment on our points. You know, it's a lot like Chuck E. Cheese, but, but you get a cutting board, you know. So. Right now, we have like 50,000 points. I don't know how many cutting boards that'll give us, probably not that many. But you know, it's better than spending our money on that, right? Then we have our government allowances. So we have our brown boxes with our allowances for commodities that comes from the Department of Defense, which I always think is so interesting that we get food from the Department of Defense. It's because we're part of.
Meals ready to eat.
So we're part of the USDA program, which is also part of the Department of Defense. So we may get turkey roast, we may get hamburgers, we could get frozen blueberries. We choose the, we get a list in like February and then we make decisions as to what products we would use the most. And we only have to pay for shipping on those. And they give us a certain percentage based on our participation. We also have favors, fresh fruit and vegetables order receipt system. Favors, right now, we have a $25,000 rebate for them, which gives us fresh fruit and vegetables, which are all American. Fresh fruits from California, New York, Connecticut, all over the country. It's run by the state of Connecticut. And then we have our farm-to-table program. This is a new one and I'm really excited about this. We have about $7,000 to spend. It's for a local farm that you can choose. I'm, I'm very excited to partner with Yukon. They're trying to find us a very good local farm. A lot of the schools are getting lettuces and onions and that sort of thing. So they try to bring you in to a small farm, like, say like a Holcomb Farm, not like a Rosedale because they're a little bit bigger than that. But one of the, the farms that we may be able to use is the Gifts of Love Farm up in, which would be fabulous. So we'll see. We'll see how it all plays out.
Are there any food hubs around here that we can participate in? Up in Boston and I know a couple where they bring a lot of small farmers together to a hub and then they redistribute those foods and go out to school systems. And it's all fresh fruits and vegetables.
So the new farm-to-table program with the state of Connecticut, I think is looking to do that while working with Yukon Collaborative. And that's what they're trying to do is they're trying to pull in the small farms in that way. So they're, we go through Yukon to kind of sort that out where you want to get that from to pull in from. So that's how their, the state has used that money. And they distribute it to each district that participates in the programs.
I will say that the couple of bullets at the bottom that during the time since July 1st that Bonnie has taken over as director, she's just been very diligent about where are there opportunities for us to obtain free things, you know, get value for what my, my brief experience as director from March to June, nutrition services, you will recall, 100 Days of Terror, I call it. I mean, like, all of this stuff, I was like, and Bonnie was incredibly helpful, you know, we were all about the cheese commodities in the spring. Like I've learned all about. So it's just a tremendous amount of knowledge that she brings in and, and gets value out of the, out of the dollars for the school district and for families.
I also will say that I did, with my first week here, I read an email from the state and they had a grant available and it had to be done within a week. And we don't normally qualify for some of the grants that are available from the state. So they opened it up to every school district. So we did get a refrigerator from the state of Connecticut this year for Two and Hill School. And I wrote four grants and they accepted one. And I was very excited because I had never written a grant before. So, yeah, so we, I do look at all the emails that we're getting and I, I try to see where we can source wherever we can. But, and Neil's been extremely helpful. I, I can't even tell you.
So thought it would be interesting to take a quick look at how much the financials have changed in just the last couple of years. 2021 was the year of tremendous uncertainty in this department with the, the reimbursement rates weren't nearly enough with the rising cost of food. And the vendors, because there was such scarcity of food, the prices were, so you may recall us talking about a deficit in this, in nutrition services during that year. This would be the fiscal year ending 21. And so really, you know, about 300, over $300,000 worth of a deficit there. Amy Merriweather did take some money from the general fund just to make sure that, that the loss was not as devastating with the plan to really change the calculus for the next year based on what the reimburseables were going to be. So that you could see based on the, mostly because the federal grants come in at a vastly different amount, that our revenues changed in 2022. And, you know, actually last year produced over about $400,000 of a surplus, which Amy took money back out and put to the, the general fund. So in, this is not a for-profit. This is, you know, what our hope is with nutrition services is that it certainly doesn't lose any money and that it makes a little bit of money that we can put back into buying equipment for the program. You know, that's really the goal. If you had a financial goal for the program, it's to just be, you know, solvent enough that you're replacing equipment in a responsible way, not, not trying to make a profit off of it. So, so last year, pretty close. We did make, you know, felt much better about where we ended the year, ended about $150,000 ahead of the game. And most of that money would be put back into equipment of, you know, things like new refrigerators and warmers and ovens are not cheap. And, you know, the arts, our equipment in our seven schools has been aging. So that's, that's sort of the idea of, so, and, and just a dramatic change in the last few years based on the reimburseables and the free lunch, not free lunch and where, where everybody stood. So pretty, pretty significant. The one thing, so if you think about the high school accreditation process, and I know we've talked about this with the board, that once every 10 years, NEAS comes through and we get accredited, accredited. And so that happens for nutrition services programs once every five years. So the second Bonnie became the new director, we found out we were up. So to be reviewed. And we're actually a little overdue because they put a pause on these reviews during COVID. So our last review was in 2016, 17. There's a pretty significant off-site component that Bonnie, Amy Merriweather, Constance Allen, who is our accountant, doing an excellent job working with Bonnie on the financials, putting together all sorts of documentation for the state to come do this review, their checks on training. There's a lot of work checking where are you buying your food? Are you buying American sourced food? Are you, you know, that's all very important to them. So a ton of kind of paperwork and preparation that you have to turn in to the state. And then we will have an onsite review in May. They will choose two of the schools to come to and be looking at things like our menus at that point, looking for safety and sanitation checks, watching employee interactions. And they make, they leave you with recommendations of, you know, hopefully no citations, but they leave you with recommendations of what you should be focused on after, after that review process. So. They're coming in May.
May 22nd through the 20.
Actual day?
May 22nd through the 24th. We don't know what school yet, schools yet, because we're more than five schools. We get two schools. I've been through the process twice at Latimer Lane. So I, the onsite stuff doesn't terrify me as much as the offsite stuff, if we're being honest. The sheer amount of paperwork is astounding.
And who is reviewing you? What department is it?
The State Department of Education has a nutrition department. It's run by a, well, John Frazzinelli's involved in that, but Susan Fiori is the person who is in charge, I believe, of the nutrition. Carrie Danino is our person. She's really fantastic. I just talked to her this morning about an entirely different issue that we were having. They, I send her emails, ask her questions. She right back. So they're really, they don't want us to fail. They want to see us succeed. Every time something is up for review, like anything they're looking for, there is a Zoom meeting and they explain exactly what they're looking for before you send it in. So they really can't be any better at doing this. So.
And other than our annual certification, do they come in between those five years?
So all, all throughout the year, there are other certifications that are having. Right now, I'm right in the middle of doing our healthy food certification, which is extensive. It includes the school store, vending machines. We're trying to sort through all of that because we've had a lot of attrition and people coming back. And it's been very interesting to try to get everything where it needs to be. But there's a lot of things that are included in our program, but they do monitor all this stuff all the time.
As we got to the end here, we had to do a little celebration. This should have been Bonnie's new kitchen.
That was really hard. Well, because I sat in on the meetings to create this kitchen at the beginning.
As director, I think you get to bump the chef for the first.
So I, yeah, it's a little bittersweet.
So just a few highlights of where we are now. Upper left, you can see that's one of the serving lines. Kids will come through in two. This, this cafeteria is designed more like Squadron where there are two cafeterias to flow through. Upper middle is the fabulous view from the cafeteria seating out to that big window, out to the front of the school. Upper right is all the new ovens that are in place. Bottom left is sort of the entryway and then the middle wider open door is where kids will punch out as they process their lunch. And then on the bottom right, you can see the walk-in freezer, walk-in fridge that are all brand new. I will say for the Latimer Lane community, we have to move this kitchen over December and train the staff on the new equipment. So week before Christmas vacation and the week after, you may get some pretty simple brown bag lunches while we make the transition to move into our new home and get people trained and, and working. So, but we're gonna, you know, when you serve that many lunches a day, you're not allowed to have a soft start. You know, you, so. We're gonna, we're gonna do the best we can to continue to, to keep the, and there will be lunch every day. It just may not be, you know, the typical hot lunch that you're, that you're used to seeing until we get back up to speed. So to end, I would say, what we wanted to convey in this presentation is that our recovery from COVID, we now consider to, like, there were a lot of operations at schools that struggled in the last few years. None more so than, I mean, this was a rough time. I, I think of some of the departments I oversee with, you know, we've talked about transportation with Salters and the challenges that COVID brought to them. But I, this one, nutrition services is another area that really went, I mean, there, it was two years ago where every elementary school, they had all the lunches on carts and were bringing them to classrooms because kids didn't go to the cafeteria. That was not that long ago that that's how we were serving lunch in the schools. So I've already highlighted our excellent transition to a new director. I will say this, that, you know, the fact of the matter is that many school districts have sourced out this service, that they bring in a company that, you know, will, that is like a cafeteria company that you would see at a corporate or even a, and, you know, that's who comes in and does the, and some of our local areas have done that. in and does the, and some of our local areas have done that. The, the ability to stay local and bring in somebody with Bonnie's roots in the community, um, these are our, most of our workers live here in Simsbury. This is, you know, so we're proud that we're going to be able to continue to, um, move forward with that program. It's, it's, in addition to Bonnie, I would highlight the, most, most of these workers are part-time, but there are seven full-time managers in each of the buildings. So there's a cafeteria manager on, at each site. They are the backbone of this operation. They take real pride in what they do. Um, we are lucky that the three biggest operations have very experienced people, um, it with, um, Katerina at the high school, Nancy at the middle school and Marcia at Squadron Line have all been there a long, long time and are, um, you know, very experienced managers at the largest operations. But we brought in some new, uh, managers to the other schools, um, who are, um, just bringing a lot of good energy into the department and doing a great job. Um, you know, they're all about customer service. Uh, I, I added in here, I know there was some commentary at the last meeting at Henry James about lunch, but I could tell you from leading them, they are trying to serve lunches that, that kids are going to eat. They, they're trying to find both nutritional values, but what do kids like? What is, you know, you can't get the nutritional value unless you're eating it. So, uh, we don't want to see kids throwing things away that they, they should be eating. Um, and they work very hard to buy and prepare the, the foods that kids want. They're very, um, conscious about the healthy options, not only from the, uh, the requirements, but I mean, you can, you can at the middle school and high school, go through the salad bar. There are soups that they're putting out there. They're really trying to make sure kids who really want to access healthy options have that. And the work they do with the kids who have food allergies and their awareness of it and working with those families, uh, not only food allergies, but students who are diabetic. I mean, they're tremendous in the, in the attention to the customer that they do, uh, that they pay. And I wanted to highlight that. So with that said, it's been, it's a great, it's been a great transition. We have, um, you know, it's hard work, but a very, a positive morale in the department right now. And, you know, looking for that celebration of a new opening at Latimer Lane to kind of, uh, get, get one more, uh, big check mark, uh, there that we've been waiting for, for a long time. So.
And I know it's, I know it's so late. Can I just ask you one thing?
Sure.
Like, um, and it's probably a dumb question. Okay. But I.
Excuse me, there are no dumb questions.
I did not realize, like, when you put out those lunch menus, and by the way, I love this presentation. I have never sat through one of these before. So I think this is fantastic and thank you.
Did I beat SEL?
It's not about winning.
No. Not a competition. I was going to say, did you beat your October 1st? Like, I don't know. That's a good one. But the, um, the lunches that you pick and you prepare, so there's not, who decides, like, a cinnamon roll is going to be offered on a Monday on breakfast or?
So breakfast, so a lot, a lot of the girl, the managers know, like, I knew what my kids liked at Latimer Lane. So I just ordered the stuff I knew that they liked because at the end of the day, if a kid doesn't eat it, they're not, they're still hungry. So I knew what my kids liked. Like, I knew they loved green peppers at Latimer. They like cucumber slices. They like the cinnamon rolls from Hadley that are whole grain cinnamon rolls. Um, certain things we do have a little freedom with, you know, the fruits and vegetables. Like, I don't serve grapes at Latimer Lane because they roll all over the floor and make me crazy. And sometimes they come with a lot of mold and spiders in them. So I would rather cut up a watermelon and give the kids watermelon because they like that equally as much. So we do have, I mean, there are pictures, if you look on the website, that show the variety that we put out every single day for the students. It's not just one or two fruits. Generally, it's three or four fruits. It could be raisins and we've, craisins. Apparently craisins are a thing now. The kids love them. Watermelon flavored craisins. They're awful.
No, I was just curious, like, how do you type the chicken patty or whatever it was?
Chicken patty, I, you know, we have to incorporate all of that. So the lunch menu is more solid.
Okay.
The breakfast menu can be a little more fluid to your students, but the lunch menu has to be a little more solid because there's a lot more.
Can I pick up on Jen's question? And I feel a little silly asking this considering the financial constraints we just talked about. But as a father of two high school sons, I'm not sure I'd be allowed back in the house if I didn't ask this question. Um, it's really about portion size. Their question isn't that they don't like the food. It's that they feel that they've got to go back for a second lunch or, you know, the size is the same that it was in junior high and maybe even elementary school. So.
The sizes are different between elementary school because it's based on calories. We do not set the serving size.
That's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah, that comes from the US Department of Labor.
Totally self-serving. I had to ask the question.
And then that ties to any reimbursement rates or any, anything like that?
Yep. And they only get reimbursed for the first.
One meal.
Meal. So, yeah.
And I, and I did, and I'm sorry that now, I wasn't going to, I was just going to ask Matt this, but I was thinking that while we're talking about it, since Jeff brought it up, on these charts, these wonderful charts that you gave us that show the, the calories and stuff that they can have, um, the sixth to eighth grade does, so do, do sixth graders, you know, get?
So it would be near, yeah, they do get a little gifting. It's a little bit nearly impossible to separate out.
Yes, I would think.
And we've, we've battled with this.
Of course, because our sixth is in elementary.
Yeah, because they're in elementary. So it does make it a little more interesting. Because if they were up with seventh, eighth grade.
They get a bigger lunch.
Yeah, they would get, you know, one more chicken.
Yeah, but they still get snack time in the seventh grader. So.
That's true.
There you go.
And they don't get recess in seventh grade. Okay. Thank you. It was very curious.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
Oh, no.
There's more agenda.
Well, I know, but she can leave.
She can leave. It was really nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we are on to capital improvement.
Talk a little bit about capital. Yeah. I asked, I asked Jason to put this together because, um, the interim town manager, when he came on board, uh, working with both the Board of Selectment, myself as superintendent, um, heard a lot of what we know, that there are significant capital challenges in the district. So he had some ideas of things he wanted to do differently. I wanted the board to get an overview of that prior to us attending the tri-board meeting in December because Lee is going to give a presentation about some of these changes and some of his thoughts around capital, uh, at the tri-board.
Does he, just a quick question because we're in that weird funky transition.
Yeah.
Has he talked with the new town manager? Is there agreement?
I can't speak to, I can't speak to that.
Okay. Just thought I would ask. I didn't know.
So the first thing that the town manager asked for was that representatives from Public Works, Parks and Rec, and Board of Ed actually form a committee to discuss the capital projects, which is something we hadn't done prior to the, the more formal budget process in the past. So this gave me an opportunity to see where the boards, Board of Ed's, uh, capital projects fit into the bigger town picture of, uh, what was happening in each year. So that coincides with moving to that 12-year plan. It was an interesting way to see, uh, if we're talking about very large projects, like a renovation of a school, not splitting it in the same year that Parks and Rec is doing something large or Public Works is doing something particularly large. Uh, so this year, for our capital improvement projects, this is anything over $250,000. Uh, we have a roof replacement at two. This is two out of the four, uh, vintages of roof. So that's a roughly over $1 million project. The next is at the high school, upgrading some features of the amphitheater and auditorium. Uh, one comment that came to mind while I was listening to the food services piece was that the amphitheater at the high school during COVID, uh, was used as a place where meals were eaten. The carpet really never recovered from that. Uh, so part of this is to remove carpeting and seating in the amphitheater and then also some, some 1968, uh, era theater lighting at the high school. So we've been trying to make incremental improvements in the auditorium there. So last year we improved some stage microphones, sort of getting larger and larger. This year we, uh, actually, uh, air-conditioned that space, which makes a big improvement. And, uh, for this project, we're looking primarily at the theater lighting piece. I would imagine one more year for, uh, more of the audio components. And I'm hoping we can make a big enough dent in the theater lighting, but that may also have a little more in upcoming year. Um, the next project, district network infrastructure. So this is the servers and routers and switches, oh my, uh, piece that we do every other year. Uh, $350,000 towards that. And then, uh, one of the new things I'd like to do with capital improvements is to take some items that we never seem to really catch up on and do what we've done with district network infrastructure. So we've been very lucky in terms of, of how the budgets are approved, that every other year we get this chunk of money to make sure our network stays where we want it to be. We haven't been so good with flooring improvements, carpeting, tile. We haven't been so good with pavement improvements. So bus loops, parking lots. So what I'm looking to do is to have every other year pieces as well for those two things. So this year would be district network infrastructure and flooring. Next year would be pavement improvements. So every other year we're doing those kinds of capital projects. So instead of trying to do a, a $2 million pavement project, we're going to pick away at, at a few hundred thousand dollars every other year and actually make some progress there.
Currently, right now, we try to pick away at a CNR sometimes on that, right? Which we can talk about later. There's just not enough capacity there.
Yeah. The, the capital non-recurring is, is a 500,000 allotment every year, but even the school buses come out of that. So, and for the, the amount of need that's under $250,000, capital projects is far more than that.
Hey, hey, Jason, just quickly on the, on the Tooten Hills, the roof replacement, is that a half? Is it a third? I'm just curious, how, how much?
It's approximately half. Yep. There's four, there's four vintages. This is three. Other capital improvements, just generally speaking, these, these types of projects that we're, that we're looking at, uh, for both CNR and since this is the, both six-year and extended 12-year plan, uh, these plans include other roofing projects. The Henry James roof is a considerably large, uh, roof project that needs to be done. We're looking at splitting that up. So I believe it's a, off the top of my head, a $4 million overall project that will split into, to multiple, uh, years. Additionally, the, the common things are, are boilers and pavement and security improvements, plumbing, electrical. So these are all part of that 12-year plan that we'll be, uh, looking at. And then, uh, lastly, we have been in discussions and got some, uh, preliminary numbers from Tekton to look at, uh, replacement of Squadron Line Elementary School. So, uh, in the initial discussions, the, the method that we've used at Latimer, which is kind of tear it down to the studs and build it back up, renovate as new, uh, at Squadron, I don't think the value is there to do that. So we're looking at, uh, building a new school on that same property and then transferring students over to the new building and tearing down the old.
And I was asked about that. And I mean, I think we all, having been through the facilities and enrollment work, realize that when we get to the point of really where this may be or may not be placed on a plan, we're going to be pushed to show what another option looks like. And I think you always have to have more than one way to look at that, particularly when you're talking about these numbers. But in our initial study, as Jason referenced, very hard building to renovate because there's absolutely no swing space. So you'd be talking about summer months. You'd, you'd be talking about a whole different scope. So I mean, there's a lot there to consider. Um, what Lee Erdman is, is trying to talk to the Board of Finance about a little bit and get them to understand that there are ways to meet the needs that the different boards are talking about, but we need to be a little more flexible possibly in some of the policy decisions that are guiding them, right? We have the debt service that we hear about every year. And is there a willingness to have more conversation there or not? Um, is there a willingness to look at CNR a little bit differently? I know in my conversations with Lee and, and Amy for our upcoming budget process, you know, if we can, that, that's a number, $500,000. We talked about in our budget last year, it was a tough year. We had to, we had to pull it out, that you buy your buses out of and you do all your projects for seven buildings that are under $250,000. So it's giving you a couple hundred thousand dollars per buildings. The number hasn't changed in 30 years. So it hasn't responded to any of the escalation. And we have, not to get too much into the detail, it's a scaled payback to the Board of Finance over time. So it only hits the operating budget about 20%, 25%. So you could double that number and not get the operating impact of the tax burden all up, all upfront. So that, I think it's a conversation we need to explore a little bit more because if we can provide Jason with more capacity to hit some of those needs on an annual basis, it provides a different flow to what we're doing in the, in the larger capital planning. So there's a lot to talk about there. The timing is unique.
Yeah.
He has some interesting ideas and some things he'd like to talk about. And then he's, he's heading out the door as somebody new is transitioning in with many new members on the Board of Selectment now. So there's a lot of, of new here.
A lot of turnover.
As we talk about, um, capital with our boards.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think it's really going to be important for Board of Finance to be open-minded. Um, because it can't, you know, there was, there was statement, there were statements made last year during public hearing that we would have to choose operating or capital, but you can't maintain a town by choosing. You have to find a way to make it work across both budgets. Um, and our building certainly can't stand to be neglected for another 10 years.
No. And I, and I think we've done a lot of work on the studies. We've put the time in. We've had a lot of public conversations. Um, and this current Board of Finance has supported large-scale school projects as well.
Sure.
So it's, it's this made up for kind of lost time on both the, the town side and the Board of Ed side. That's our.
Right.
Our biggest challenge that we got to figure out how to talk about. So.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you, Jason.
Reconstitute facilities and enrollment. There's an interest in community math.
Yes.
That was a way to, uh, close the show, Jason.
It's a mic drop right there.
There's one more thing, people.
No, there's not.
This is quick.
There's two more.
So you just have a copy of the, um, Board of Education kind of meeting, public meeting schedule, schedule for the budgets internally. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be having our, uh, budget meetings with our leadership team. We have the Board of kind of highlight dates. We have the Board of Finance meeting, the tri-board meeting on the 19th. And then we kind of lay out through the next months of January, uh, and February, the different components, uh, of the budget that we'll present. Uh, really starting with what I think is going to be a very important conversation this year, uh, which will be led by Katie Crisula on January 9th, around, uh, special education in particular, some of our intensive needs programs, some of our specialized programs. We've talked last year about, um, outplacement costs, how they've escalated due to the cost of tuition with independent schools. Part of the flip side of that conversation is how can we improve our own internal programs for comprehensive students so that we keep our students in-house in really quality programs and maybe lessen the need to go outside. But it's a resource conversation either way.
Yep.
Um, that we need to, need to talk about and think about. And we've had some really good conversations with parents and teachers and staff, uh, early on this year about those programs that we'll be picking up in, in public here. And I present in, in February.
13th.
February 13th.
There's a lot of love going to be in that presentation. Bring your Valentine today.
There you go.
All right. With that, we are back to our second public audience. This is Boyko.
I'm a punk, but it's about tonight. So. Hi, I'm Lori Boyko from 15 Oker Road. Um, first I have a couple of quick practical points about the functionality of the board because I'm big on the legality. And it was mentioned during the, um, committee reports that the curriculum committee agreed to keep the capstone requirement. And I was at that meeting and it was discussed at length. And I will acknowledge that the committee sort of all nodded in agreement, but there was no actual formal vote, to my understanding, at, at that meeting or at any other curriculum committee meeting. And I think it is incumbent on that committee to vote. And then I think the procedure, if I'm not mistaken, is for the committee to bring their report back to the full board, which is supposed to then have a conversation and vote as a board on whether they keep that or don't keep that. So that'll be up to you guys to work out. But I, I think it's a procedural thing. And similarly, um, when we hear reports about CAVE and the delegation and the legislative. and the delegation and the legislative priorities, and there's votes there, I've never seen a vote here or anywhere about how our delegates to that are going to vote on behalf of our Board of Ed. So, I don't know whether that's just whoever goes decides how they wanna vote, or there's some kind of implicit understanding, but I think, from a transparency standpoint, I think this board is supposed to acknowledge how they want our delegates to vote. That being said, I'm just curious, if every, if anyone on this board ever says, hey, maybe this might not be a good idea, maybe this might not be within the scope of our expertise, maybe this is not the area we're supposed to be delving into. A couple of years ago, when the board was talking about adding social workers, I acknowledged that some children needed mental health services, but I questioned whether that was within the school's purview on whether those, or whether those needs were more appropriately served elsewhere within the community or privately through their families. This SEL is subjecting all students to a psychological training regardless of need. When you are teaching self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, and self-care practices within what you are designating as a safe space, regardless of what euphemisms you want to use, you are practicing psychology on groups of children in uncontrolled, non-therapeutic spaces by unlicensed, non-professionals. Dr. Batchelor said herself that teachers are teaching other teachers best practices. This is broadcast psychological training of children, our children, my child, without consent in classrooms, by teachers, not therapists. There really is no ability to opt out, because this is embedded throughout the day, throughout the curriculum. If an individual or private school were to attempt to teach those soft skills this way, they would be cited for practicing therapy without a license.
Can you wrap up now, Lori?
Yep. I see a real liability to the town for this here. No less importantly, every 20 minutes doing therapy is 20 minutes not teaching math, or science, or writing. Thank you.
All right. With that, our next Board of Ed meeting will be Tuesday, December 12, 2023, here at the conference room. I wish you all a good swearing-in on Monday, and thanks. It's been fun.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Bang that camera.
All in favor?